Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Sorry about that, here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 7, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We will now move on to special event applications, and we'll have Leisha Floyd present those.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application before you is for the June 17 rolling car parade, which would happen on June 19. Next is Asbury Park Scott Talent, which would be held in Springwood Park on June 12, followed by a bicycle safety event held in the Transportation Center on May 27. The next event is from the New Jersey Black Women's Physicians Association. They would like to do a COVID education event in Springwood Park. They were encouraged to work to coordinate their efforts with what's already happening here with our Social Service Department and other agencies, and they did request to partner with the city, and that request was denied, so they'll be paying all fees. Next is Bethel AME Church would like to hold an event on August 8, a worship service in Springwood Park. The Asbury Park Annual Volleyball Tournament on August 7 on the beach. And we have Second Baptist Church would also like to do four different outdoor worship experiences in Springwood Park. And lastly, we have a one wedding on June 18, Sixth Avenue Beach. Are there any questions on the applications? Okay, before I conclude, I'd just like to give the council a brief update on where I am with regards to summer activities. Please understand all of this is tentative, is very much a work in progress. The city's water park will be opening on June 12. It will be open seven days a week, from 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., fully staffed. It will be free for all individuals. We are looking to do a modified summer day camp program. We would have three locations, Bradley Primary School, Thurgood Marshall, and MLK Upper Elementary School. Would be very limited this year with only 60 kids per site, 10 kids per group. Trips will be limited, and we would have a COVID protocol in place. In a worst-case scenario, if we needed to end the program, we're working on having some type of virtual activities available, so the kids will still have something to do. Also working on a Zumba and yoga event that would happen in Springwood Park on Tuesday evenings for six weeks. We will again do the ambassador program. It would be modified this year. Last year, they worked basically seven days a week. This year will be four days a week, but we will still target that age group of 15 to 18-year-olds, and they would be hired to, although PPE wouldn't be necessarily a priority this year, they would be distributing others' pertinent information and be assisting with various city events and activities. Activity bags will also be prepared for parents who may not be comfortable sending their kids to summer camp. They can be picked up from City Hall, and they would be free as well. We will have a limited amount of beach cards available, as we did last year, with proof of residency. Parents between, who have children between the ages of five and 12, would be able to bring their kids to the beach for free on weekdays, Monday through Friday. Working on a soccer, summer soccer program to be held at Bradley Soccer Field beginning in July. And I had a conversation yesterday with the library. They're in the process of working on their outdoor patio area, which should be done in a couple of weeks, so they would allow us to use that for our summer camp, for storytime, or outdoors arts and crafts, because small groups could be housed there. One thing I did forget to mention with regards to the summer camp program, there would be a charge. It would be less this year, $60 per child, $30 for every child in the same household, and of course scholarships will be available, so no child will be turned away. That's a brief scenario. Like I said, it's a work in progress. There may be some additions added, but hopefully no subtractions. So, thank you for your time. Are there any questions on the programming or comments?
That's awesome. Thanks, Leisha.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leisha.
Thank you.
We will now move on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman.
Hi, so I just wanted to let everyone know that the Asbury Park Fire Department Memorial Day service will be held on Monday, May 31, at 9:00 a.m. in Fireman's Park on Main Street between Fifth and Sunset. Hope to see everyone there. Cookman Avenue Live, it will be a series of acoustic music concerts on the 700 block of Cookman Avenue, Friday evenings from 7:00 to 9:00, and Sunday afternoons from 3:00 to 5:00 will run Memorial Day through Labor Day. And that's it. I hope everyone has a safe and happy and healthy Memorial Day weekend.
Councilmember Clayton.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to invite you tomorrow night, the Quality of Life and Mayor's Wellness Committee, we're having a summer of Safe Streets Summer Kickoff. You can have your bicycle serviced. We are giving away helmets and lights. There's going to be a bike safety workshop, and also one for scooters, and there'll be health screenings. It's going to take place in the parking lot of the Transportation Center. You can enter from Springwood Avenue. It faces Main Street, so we are inviting everybody to come out, so I hope we'll see you tomorrow evening, and that again is between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to say this is my own personal, uh, personal statement and my feelings towards it, and that's wearing a mask. Let me just give you a little update with what happened to me over the week. I had this gentleman come over my house. I offered him a mask. I asked him to have a shot. He did not have a shot. He did not want to take the mask, so I asked him to leave. 24 hours after that, I get a call saying that this gentleman is in the hospital in critical condition, so I'm just concerned about my people in Asbury Park. A lot of people haven't gotten the shots, and a lot of people did, but a lot of people are not wearing masks now. I just ask everyone to be careful. It's very important. Just don't trust everyone that you face-to-face with. Just be careful. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Asbury Park Public Art Commission, the Asbury Park Art Council, and Monmouth County Arts, who provided us with a couple of grants for the 14 panels you're seeing around the city. 80% of them are done by local artists, and I also want to thank the Department of Public Works, who put together the panels, and much appreciated Eileen Chapman, Councilwoman Eileen Chapman, and the City of Asbury Park for getting that project going. It's great. I can't tell you how many people have stopped me over the last few days to talk about what they think of the murals, and just wanted to thank everybody involved. That's it.
Mayor Moore.
Excuse me. Yes, just an update from the last meeting. There was a couple residents who said 20 years ago, the city had 53 police officers. We researched that, and as I thought, they were wrong. 20 years ago, the city had 83 police officers. That's all I have, because I'm going to leave the good news as far as the city's going to reopen, and the city manager's going to give us all those facts now. Thank you.
Matters from the city manager.
Thanks, Melody. Thanks, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, we are going to reopen City Hall and all of our city facilities starting June 1. When you come to visit City Hall, we ask that you still wear a mask when you're inside the building. When you enter the building, you'll be asked to register with our receptionist, who will notify the department that you're looking to visit, and we will notify the department. Provided there are not many people at that department, you will be allowed to go to the department to do your business. As I mentioned, we will be requiring people to wear masks in all city facilities, and this will be until that has changed, but we ask that you be respectful of our staff and others. And for those who are not willing to wear a mask, we can still work with you outside as we have been. Our seniors center will also be reopening for the seniors probably in the early part of July. The VNA will be finishing up their vaccination schedule there. We are not stopping vaccinations in the city. There will still be other opportunities for vaccinations that we'll keep everyone apprised of. And also, our library will be opening. They should be opening as well next week. So, we look forward to welcoming everyone back to City Hall. We just ask that you wear a mask, and just be patient with us, and be kind to one another. Thank you.
Matters from the city attorney.
Yes, thanks, Melody. I just wanted to make a brief statement with regard to ordinance number 2021-25, which is on the agenda this evening for introduction. It's commonly known as the Cannabis Opt-Out Ordinance. I just wanted to let the public know that the city council's consideration of the Cannabis Opt-Out Ordinance does not mean that the city council is opposed to cannabis, nor that the council will not consider allowing cannabis establishments to locate within the city as we move forward. Rather, the city council's potential adoption of the Opt-Out Ordinance is simply intended to maintain the status quo, while the city undertakes a more thorough and detailed review of whether and to what extent the city may wish to allow cannabis establishments to locate within the city. This review will involve an analysis of the various classes of cannabis licenses and their suitability in the various zoning districts and redevelopment areas of the city, along with potential conditions and restrictions that the city may impose on any of the types of cannabis establishments that the city wishes to allow. This review will take time, and will involve input from the planning board, along with city staff members and professionals. City officials have recognized that it would be extremely challenging to undertake a careful review of all these matters, and to take formal action, which involves both the council and the planning board, prior to the deadline set by the new law. Unfortunately, the new law only provides municipalities with 180 days from the approval of the law to take action. The law was approved on February 22, so the deadline to act is by August 20 of 2021, and a municipality's failure to enact an ordinance within that time period will cause the municipality to suffer adverse consequences. As such, city officials have recommended the adoption of the Opt-Out Ordinance for the time being, while the city undertakes a more detailed study, as I referenced earlier. The city may then determine at a later date to opt back in, to whatever degree the city deems appropriate, but without the pressure of being under the time constraint set forth in the new law. It should be noted that the New Jersey League of Municipalities supports this approach, and has prepared a model Opt-Out Ordinance for all New Jersey municipalities to consider, and the Asbury Park Ordinance is based on the League of Municipalities' model ordinance. And that's all I have to state at this time. Thank you.
We are now on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now open to the public. Members of the public may participate by using the raised hand function on your computer, or by dialing *9 on your phone to raise your hand in the meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when you have one minute remaining. I am calling upon Hugh Giordano, Hugh Giordano. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hugh Giordano, 57 Argyle, Blackwood, New Jersey. I'm here as a representative of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, UFCW Local 152. The UFCW is the official labor union, which represents cannabis workers from seed to sale, and we're a national labor union of 1.3 million hard-working families across the U.S. and Canada. We're the official labor union under the guise of the AFL-CIO, and we're also working with our union brothers and sisters in the NJ Building Trades for the retrofit and the build-out of these facilities. New Jersey has some of the best labor laws when it comes to cannabis. In fact, Virginia just took our labor law in their adult use bill, and Connecticut is modeling their labor laws off of our adult use bill here in New Jersey. I'm asking today, although I heard the explanation, we're, the UFCW is disappointed, because this has been a hot topic for the past two to four years, and it's sad to hear that the NJ League of Municipalities is pushing an opt-out ban, not only in Asbury Park, but around the state. This was an opportunity to get jobs now. The application process is going to be happening soon enough, and it will hurt union jobs. These jobs come with living wages, sick time, vacation time, healthcare, retirement, and most of all, a voice on the job. This is a middle-class boom. These jobs are very much come with a lot of education experience, such as chemistry, botany, and horticulture, and they attract a young base, of educated base, folks that go to Stockton and Rutgers. So, an opt-out is unfortunately a direct job killer, and it's sad to hear, especially since Asbury Park has been in talks about cannabis for, I know, many years following cannabis on a local level.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. Asbury Park has been the leader. So, I would suggest two things. One, the City of Bayonne adopted a ordinance about six weeks ago. I would suggest that this Asbury Park adopt that same ordinance. It's a merit-based ordinance. They look at labor standards, environmental standards, community standards, and I would really suggest that you look at the City of Bayonne and make workers' rights a part of any type of process in the future. And if you want a tour of a dispensary, I can take you to the Garden State Dispensary, which was one of the original six, which is unionized, which was the first-to-go union, and probably the most transparent of all the dispensaries and cultivation sites in the state. So, we would ask that you table this, but if it doesn't happen, we would ask, the UFCW would ask that you please adopt the Bayonne ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Calling upon 3350. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, yeah, Ernest McNolly, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Pointon Beach, Florida. I'd like to start off by saying, I'm in the process of opas. I'm looking very heavily into business done between the City of Asbury, Councilwoman Chapman, and her husband, who owns Standard Supply in Tinton Falls on Route 33. So far, I have about $12,000 worth of receipts that were done in three contracts, so that they're under the $6,000, so that they don't have to go out to bid. They were, that was for lumber for the lockers on the beach, and to build some new ones. There's more now with the art project, all that lumber for those panels. I filed the Oprah with the city clerk. I want all the receipts between Standard Supply, City of Asbury, while Eileen Chapman was appointed to the board, I think in 2014, between her and her husband doing business with the city. So, that's where that stands, because I'm going to allege it's a form of misconduct. And the city attorney, who's been there with that law firm since Operation Bid Rig before 2000, has been through so many things like this in Asbury, and they've never done anything. They were there when all of Asbury got arrested, the city manager, the mayor, the council members, everybody, for corruption. Operation Bid Rig, Solomon Dweck was in their ocean office. What is this law firm still doing representing the City of Asbury? Long Branch, when they got a new mayor in 2018, the first thing they did was fire Ansel Graham Aaron, Jimmy Aaron especially, Mr. Raffredo's boss, who, they like to always say, "Well, we don't do anything, you know, sexual or criminal," or, "Look at the records." Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? And Mr. Raffredo said, "That's preposterous. There's nothing preposterous except you covering up what you and your law firm do, and we have proof, witnesses."
One minute remaining.
And everything. Thank you. And then there's more. There's Kendall, this child-beating person who lost his school license, who hit a kid in the head, and is under investigation in February of '20 in the school. You still allow him around children. The state removed his license for brutalizing children in the Asbury schools. I showed you the lawsuit. I showed you the findings, and you keep saying it's not true. Now he's going around to functions with the Recreation Committee with some prostitute, you know, dancing up on the stage with all the city officials, like Raffredo, Asbury Hotel, which the city law, "Oh, we have nothing to do with Asbury." Listen, Mr. Ansel Graham Aaron, you should be let go from this firm, from the city, and investigated right away for corruption, just like the prosecutor who's resigning, and the school superintendent in Asbury, who's--
Time's up.
Melody, I'd like to make a comment, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So, I just want to set the record straight. My husband is third generation in his business, Standard Supply. His grandfather opened the business in 1932. The city's been buying supplies from them ever since. When I was being appointed to the city council in 2016, I asked the city manager, the city council, and the city attorney if there would be any conflict with me being on council while the city purchased items for my husband. I was told no, but that I should abstain from any bills that he would, that would come the way of Standard Supply, which I've always done. So, I just wanted to set that record straight, and so I've listened and watched you put a lot of energy into consistently making hateful, inaccurate, and angry statements. I hope that before the end of your life, you find some kindness in your heart, and you take some of that energy and do something good for someone. That's it.
I'm also just going to say one other thing regarding, well, first of all, I don't know why Ernest feels like he needs to scream. Everybody can hear you, so there's no need to spend your three minutes screaming. So, just keep that in mind. Nobody's hard of hearing on this call. We can hear you. You don't need to scream. And I also want to say that when this pandemic, we, the Public Art Commission had this idea, and the Arts Council, you know, when this pandemic started, because we wanted to bring people to town, but safely, and we wanted them to walk around and look at art, and we could not find wood. We could not find wood, and we could not get this project off the ground. And but for Tommy, finding us wood this time, getting a grant from Monmouth County Arts, Michelle Alonso coordinating the artist, and DTW spending some time putting these together, this project would absolutely not come off. It would not have come into fruition. So, I just want to acknowledge, the only reason we have wood to perform this project was because of Tommy. That's it.
Yes, and I'd also like to, as well, very briefly, with regard to the comments made with regard to Councilwoman Chapman, I will indicate for the record that competitive quotes have been solicited on each and every occasion where the city has procured supplies from this company, and this company provided the low quote on every occasion. The only purchase that was made without competitive quotes was for the amount of $62.24. Every other purchase was made in accordance with appropriate procurement requirements. Also, I'd like to remind the speaker that he does leave himself open to defamation lawsuits with the erroneous and slanderous statements that he continues to make at each and every one of these meetings, and I'd also like to state that since the time that I've been the city attorney, no city officials have been arrested in Asbury Park. And the fact that my law firm was replaced, representing the City of Long Branch, was simply because a new administration took over after the tenure of Adam Schneider. I believe he was in office for about 25 or 26 years, and we worked with him during the majority of those years, and it is not uncommon for incoming new administration to bring on new professionals. That's standard operating business. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, Moore, I guess I'll wrap it up. So, the person that spoke uses the words alleged. He can allege anything he wants. I do not know when once he has been correct in any of his alleges. He can feel free to Oprah anything and everything he wants, and the city will continue to comply by the law with total transparency, which he is not happy with. So, we'll go into the next speaker. Thank you.
I am calling upon 9700, 9700. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Peter Siegel, 1412 Main Street. I just wanted to take this opportunity tonight to come on and say that it just is, it's so exciting to see action and activity in our city, and with the approaching Memorial Day and summer starting, it's awesome. I mean, everyone's so psyched to be at the Jersey Shore, to be in Asbury Park, and I don't know, I can feel it now, like I'm driving around, I'm here, and I sense it, I feel it, and it's just, I think the city's doing a great job of getting our, the town ready for summer, and it looks clean, it looks great, there's work going on on roads, and it's everything that you want to see, given this tough time that we're hopefully really for real coming out of with this pandemic, and I just, I'm glad that it looks like business as usual. And then, I would like to just say that also, you know, the real shame about what happened with the gentleman that spoke before me is that the city attorney and city council members feel the need to defend themselves, and to make comments, and spend their time addressing this guy's comments. It's awful, you know, except for the attorney who gets paid, city council members are public servants, and trying to better the city, and have to listen to this guy week after week after week. We're worse off for it, and the fact that he still has a voice, he doesn't live here, and he just spends his time calling around, it's horrible, and I feel sorry for him, feel sorry for us, and I hope we can find a way to deal with it better, but I'm sorry you guys have to defend yourselves. It's unnecessary and uncalled for, and you shouldn't have to. And, well, thank you. Good night.
Hey, thank you.
I am.
Thank you. Let me just correct you on one thing. As much as the city attorney's paid, the five of us are paid also. It's probably like negative two cents an hour, but we are paid a stipend. Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Sylvia. Sylvia, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Sylvia. Sylvia, 200 Lincoln Drive, Ocean. However, I run the Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce on Springwood Avenue. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to comment on how happy I am to hear about the reopening of the facilities and the library particularly. I'm a reader, and I just wanted to tell Mayor and Council, and City Manager, Deputy City Manager, your leadership through all of this, I think, is really what's going to inspire confidence in people going forward and trying to get back to normal, so I thank you for that. I think the Cookman Live and the art panels are going to be the first initial proof that music and art are alive and well in Asbury Park, so thank you all for all of your efforts on that. And just as far as what's going on with us, our radio station will start broadcasting on Friday. Really excited about that. We broadcast 94.3 The Point Friday morning. There's going to be three shows Fridays now, and Saturdays, I believe we might be switching that out, so we're not broadcasting on Sundays, but I'll get some more information on that. Our partner in that is New Jersey Natural Gas, as you know, and they really, they foot the whole bill. That's my dog. They foot the whole bill for that, and all they-- they ask um is that they get an opportunity to support local nonprofits. And um I just wanted to publicly thank New Jersey Natural Gas for being our partners there. And um, and uh, of course, Tom Hayes, who is our um, our liaison with them, as you, as you all know. So I hope to see you guys down at the radio station. And this is going to be a spectacular summer. Thank you all for everything.
One minute remaining.
I'm done.
Thank you. Next.
I am calling upon Michelle Gladden. Michelle Gladden, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there. My name is Michelle Gladden. I'm at 206 Second Avenue. I'm speaking tonight as the executive director of the Asbury Park Arts Council. And really, excuse me, I just wanted to say a big thank you to the city council and the administration. Throughout the mural, the 2021 mural art project, as um Deputy Mayor Quinn had, had said earlier, we sought to do this last year, had a difficult time as a nonprofit, as the executive director of a nonprofit. We knew it was difficult to raise funds during a time when folks were battling with the pandemic and the economic issues brought on by the pandemic. And so the fact that the city council and the administration wrapped their arms around the importance of bringing art in a visual way to our downtown corridor and Springwood Avenue Park was extremely um, extremely important. And we are tremendously grateful for the support and the uh work. And it was not, it was a Herculean task by members of the uh administration, including Michelle Alonso and Mike Manzella and Sonia Spina and Donna Vera. We thank you for supporting the art initiative. And I can attest uh to the gentleman who spoke earlier, that everything was done above board. We did a call for artists. We, we checked every box that we needed to check. So thank you.
And we thank you. Uh, next.
I am calling upon Jamie. Jamie, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes, Jamie Vanskyver, Greenwood Avenue, Paulsbury, New Jersey. I'm actually with Sativa Cross, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit advocating for medical cannabis patients' rights and accessibility for individuals with disability. I'm asking you to table the ordinance banning cannabis. I'm really not so much, like I see that 83.89% of your constituents voted for recreational. That is an overwhelming amount of your community that want this. I don't know why you're not listening, your constituents. I don't know why you're stigmatizing it. I don't know why you're not taking this time to like pull, pull in as much information as possible. Um, they want this. I'm here to talk about medical. I'm a medical cannabis patient. People in your community need this. They don't need to travel far away. There's drugstores within your community. People should have access to their natural wellness just as easy, easily as they could go somewhere and get a controlled substance, a narcotic like fentanyl or oxycontin or Percocet. These are the things that people are getting addicted to. These are the things that rav- that's ravaging people's bodies. And those substances are the reason that your Narcan use count is going up. Memorial Day is approaching. Veterans are killing themselves at a rate of 22 per day. A lot of them are suffering with depression, PTSD. I don't know if you're familiar with any treatments, usually an antidepressant, specifically an SSRI. And unfortunately, one of the side effects for those medications is that it increases your desire for suicide. So many of them are speaking out about how much cannabis has helped them and changed their lives. The science is here. Like there's so much information available.
One minute remaining.
And if you're going to go against your constituents that at that amount wanted recreational, I really believe truly in my heart that your constituents would have the empathy and compassion for the people in their community that are suffering from chronic illness and chronic pain. And when I say chronic, these are conditions and diagnoses that are never going away, some terminal. These are, this is people's cancer medication, seizure medication, immune illness medication, multiple sclerosis medication. These are sick and suffering people. They don't want to put substances and toxins and chemicals into their body. Cannabis is proving to work well for them, and they just want access to it. Please at least have empathy on medical patients and stop stigmatizing. If you absolutely insist, please at least consider being aware of the language that you use, not stigmatizing the medical patients in your community that are-
Time's up.
I, I, I thank you. And maybe you didn't hear when the city attorney read uh preamble is why we're opting out this time and why we can opt back in. And to keep on saying we're stigmatizing this, I, I think it insults us. And so, next, thank you.
I'm calling upon 5124, 5124. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. Uh, I have a few questions. Uh, one of them is, how many liquor licenses do we have? Pages and pages. I'd like to know the exact amount. I couldn't count them. Uh, the other thing was, what is Keystone purchasing? What are they going to do? The Keystone purchasing? And the third thing is about the rent leveling. You hired an attorney, I believe an attorney, a firm. And if I'm not mistaken, they're from Union City, which is somewhere where I come from. I, I was wondering how you would get this attorney. Did we go out for bid or we don't have to bid or, I don't know. And the last question I have is, how did we spend 3,400 on Sunset Lake? That's it?
Is that it?
Yeah. Yeah.
As far, as far as the number of liquor licenses, uh, many of them on-
Do you want me to respond, John?
On liquor licenses? Go ahead.
We, the city of Asbury Park has 42 liquor licenses. And the reason that you're seeing so many on the agenda is this is the first year that we've listed them individually. In the past, the city has listed um multiple licenses on one resolution.
Thank you, Melody.
You're welcome.
As far as did we go out to bid or RFP for the attorney? Yes. And if Donna wants to expand on that, fine. And then I wrote down something Keystone, I forget what your question was. And then your last question, now, I lost it because it, it, your, your question of Bill, how'd we spend $3,500 or $3,400 on a lake? So I, I don't, if, if you could give me a call beforehand or like give us a, a purchase order number, I, I could give you better information. But if not today, we'll get it to you. So Donna, if you want to go back on getting the question about Keystone and the attorney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this Keystone co-op is a co-op that the city is looking to join for the purchase of um scanning equipment and document imaging equipment that we plan to do in the fall. Uh, a co-op is another form of procurement for uh municipalities that allows us to purchase things at lower prices through these co-ops. There, there's many, many uh across the, the country. Uh, regarding Sunset Lake, um, I, I don't have, again, like the mayor said, specifically what that cost was, but the city did receive an open space grant from Monmouth County, and we are in the process of doing um work to Sunset Lake, um, including pavers and other things. So that might be one of the charges, but I don't know specifically. And yes, the mayor is correct. We, we did solicit um proposals for attorneys. The attorney from Union City has extensive experience with rent leveling, and that's why they've been selected.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon R. R., please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Marina Redmond. I live in Parlin, New Jersey. Um, I'm sharing my story with, to encourage your town to allow medical cannabis dispensaries so that all patients have access to their medicine. People with disabilities have a hard time traveling to dispensaries. It is expensive to use Lyft and Uber. Access links makes you wait until it has several people, and then you have to wait hours for them to pick you up. And if you have to use the bathroom, good luck. I suffer from PTSD because I was born with a birth defect, and I have several, and I've had several surgeries to save my leg. It was amputated when I was four. At that time, parents were not allowed to stay over or even walk you to the OR. And I couldn't even take my stuffed animal. It was scary with all those big people with masks on telling you to be a good girl. 2017, I was diagnosed with cancer. I had many weeks of chemo. Before my surgery, I lost 50 pounds in three weeks. It took me a month for me to get my medical cannabis card. I had surgery, and it was in, and I was in the hospital for eight days, and they could not control the vomiting. As soon as I got home, I used my med, my medical marijuana, and I was fine. I started taking long walks the next day. I had more chemo in other me, in, in other medicine that was prescribed, including opiates. That did not work. It came back in 2019. I had, I had, I had stronger chemo. My doctors told me to medicate with cannabis in the parking lot before my treatment. They also told me to medicate before the visits. My blood pressure was out of the ballpark. I am so grateful that I'm able to, to get my medical cannabis, to get my-
One minute remaining.
To having a dispensary in your town, at least for medical, for cancer patients and others. It's Memorial Day weekend, and I'm sure that you, that many veterans in your town are suffering from PTSD and other illnesses. A dispensary would support them and show gratitude for their service. We also need homegrown. Um, there's also 64 psychiatrists that prescribe medical marijuana, 10 pediatric doctors, and two doctors in your town that have, that prescribe medical cannabis. So please don't let the people in your town suffer. Thank you. And, oh, and delivery, and delivery has a charge, which we cannot afford.
Yeah, I thank you very much. Next.
Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the meeting to the public. Move to close?
Move to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is now closed to the public.
Melody, this is Donna. Before we go on, on to the next thing, I'm sorry, I also forgot to mention um in my comments that the city will also be holding their council meetings uh starting in June um in public. So this will be our last Zoom meeting for the public. Um, we will resume our uh regular council meetings in council chambers. And I believe that first meeting is June 9th, right, Melody?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. We're now on two minutes. I have the municipal council minutes of the executive session of May 12th, the 4:00 PM, the municipal council minutes of the regular meeting of May 12th, the 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On our consent agenda, we have Resolution 2021, 243 through 277. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Clayton.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21, 244, a resol, a resol, I'm sorry, you know what, I'm on the wrong page. Let me get to the individual resolutions. Resolution 21, 278, a resolution to amend the 2021 calendar year budget. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2021, 256, a resolution for the adoption of the 2021 municipal budget. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
On to Resolution 2021, 257, a resolution approving the payment of bills and invoice number 462013 and invoice 468278 are being removed from the May 26, 21 bill list. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
We are on to Resolution 2021, 258, a resolution authorizing the repairs of influent pump number one at the sewer plant. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second, Quinn.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21, 259, a resolution authorizing the purchase of trash and recycling cans. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21 dash 260, a resolution approving change order number one for Asbury and Ridge Avenue traffic signal improvements. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21 dash 261, a resolution awarding a contract for emergency medical service billing. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Kendall.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
On to Resolution 21 dash 262, a resolution appointing the- Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's not cocoa.
We're on to Resolution 2021 dash 262, a resolution appointing the firm of Marado and Garvey to serve as a rent leveling board attorney for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for a professional service associated therewith. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 21 dash 263, a resolution authorizing membership with the Keystone Purchasing Network Coop Cooperative Purchasing Program. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
Second, Moore.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 2021 dash 264, a resolution to approve a person-to-person liquor license transfer from DB Ventures LLC to Johnny Mac's House of Spirits LLC, license number 130333051009. Do I- Do I have a motion?
Chapman. Second, uh, second, Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Ma- Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash two sixty-five, a resolution rescinding payments to Wake Fair and Food Corporation and approving funds to fulfill Food Bank of Monmouth and Ocean County.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty-one dash two sixty-six, a resolution approving funds to Interfaith Neighbors for emergency food assistance for residents of Asbury Park. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash two sixty-seven, a resolution authorizing grant funding for Asbury Park small businesses through the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG CV Cares Act Fund.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty-one dash two sixty-eight, a resolution authorizing a substantial amendment to the city's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-One. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman. Second, Quinn.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two-one dash two sixty-nine, a resolution authorizing the display of an organi- organizational flag celebrating LGBTQ Pride Month on a city flagpole. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman. Second, Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
To Resolution twenty-one dash two seventy, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park acting as the redevelopment entity granting conceptual approval for a rooftop deck to fourteen oh-one Ocean Avenue LLC as a subsequent developer and referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty-two-one, two seventy-one, a resolution supporting pending legis- legislation S dash two-nine-six-three, which would authorize the creation of local civilian review boards to review police operations and conduct. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton. Second, Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty-two-one, two seventy-two, a resolution supporting pending legislation S dash six-eighty-five, which would permit municipal, county, and regional police and fire forces to establish a five-year residency requirement for police and firefighters. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
And Melody, I'm just going to say something really quick just about the last two um resolutions. Were just that uh at our last meeting, the Equity Committee uh presented for tho- for those people who are who are on the line and maybe didn't catch the last meeting. The Equity Committee made a wide range of recommendations. Um, two of those recommendations were to send kind of, and Fred, you correct me if I'm wrong, sort of like what lawyers call like friend of the court um briefs or resolutions to Trenton um and to the powers that be in Trenton to say that these two pieces of legislation, one is a civilian review board and one is for police officers to have some sort of residency requirement. Um, the recommendations from the Equity Committee was to send um a message to Trenton that has very supported both of these two pieces of legislation. So that's, so while we're kind of making our way through the recommendations from the Equity Committee, you know, kind of checking off the ones that 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 we do, the these are two that we were able to kind of um get done pretty quickly. So so, you know, just just for people who didn't catch last last couple meetings.
Thank you.
That's it.
We are now on to ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance twenty-two-one dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending section seven dash twenty-seven entitled loading zones of chapter seven traffic of the code of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey, to establish new load loading zones along Main Street SR seventy-one with a public hearing date of June twenty-third. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
No, uh, more 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 questions.
Sure.
Uh, I talked to Michael Mandel. On the second page, it says side of the street north, it should be east. Has that been corrected?
Yeah, I apologize, Melody, I didn't get that to you.
Okay.
For the for for number A, that should actually be east. And for number B, that should be west side of the street.
Okay, I will update the uh.
Thank you.
Ordinance.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, roll call, Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
And Mayor Moore.
Yes.
On to uh ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending section seven dash thirteen entitled Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets of Chapter Seven Traffic of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, to establish new restrictions related to prohibited parking at all times on Asbury Avenue and Springwood Avenue with a public hearing date of June twenty-third. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Ken- couple- Councilmember Kendall. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to Resolution twenty-two-one dash twenty-five, an ordinance prohibiting the operation of any class of cannabis business within the geographical boundaries of the city of Asbury Park and amending and supplementing Article Six entitled Zoning of Chapter Thirty, Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, as well as amending and supplementing all existing redevelopment plans relating to redevelopment areas of the city of Asbury Park accordingly, with a public hearing date of July fourteenth. That will allow us um for the planning board referral, enough time. So that would have a public hearing date of July fourteenth. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn. Second.
Second, Kendall.
Roll call, Council.
Explain that to me and that maybe the attorney can explain it. I mean, we usually have the second reading like either a week or meeting or two meetings later, I guess, because somebody explained it to me.
Yes, I'll be happy to explain it, Mayor. Um, we are simultaneously proposing that the council introduce the ordinance this evening and refer it over to the planning board because a planning board review is necessary because the ordinance uh will amend the zoning and land development sections of the city code. Under the municipal Anius Law, the planning board has a period of thirty-five days to review the ordinance and submit its recommendations back to the council, depending upon when the planning board will put this on um their agenda. Um, it could be able to come back to the council at the June twenty-third meeting. But again, that's subject to the the planning board schedule. I think sk- setting the public hearing for July fourteenth is safer because that's kind of the thirty-five day time period that the planning board has to act. If you were to set the public hearing for June twenty-third, that's about twenty-eight days. And the planning board technically has thirty-five days to review and to recommend to the council.
Thank you very much.
So with that understanding, we'll proceed with the public hearing to be scheduled on July fourteenth?
That's correct.
Yes.
Um, council uh, roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to public hearing, second readings. The first ordinance up for a public hearing is ordinance twenty-two-one dash eighteen, which is an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park, authorizing the amendment to certain financial agreements within the city. Uh, before we open it up to the public, um, Donna, do we have a brief overview of this?
From Melody, uh, this ordinance um is intended to cure the unintended consequences that um the annual service charge administrative fees in certain financial agreements uh with property owners in the city in which the amount of the payment was exceeding the ad valorem tax rate. So this amendment will cure that um in four units that currently have pilot agreements in which this is occurring.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public on for the hearing on ordinance twenty-two-one dash eighteen?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Quinn, and just want to reiterate to people that you have to stay focused on the ordinance. Right, the comments can only be on and or related to this ordinance.
That's correct. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your when your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. And your comments can only be about the ordinance being presented for the public hearing. And do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? I'm not sure if I got off track.
You did, Melody.
Move it, Kendall.
Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I am calling upon five-one-two-four, five-one-two-four. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, uh, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue, five oh-four. Um, Donna, could you give us an example of which ones of these um financials whatever are?
Yeah, so um some pilot agreements in North Beach, Wesley Grove, and the Griffin uh prod- uh property, their pilot agreements are are almost over. But as such, what's happening now, since the value of the property has um increased so much, the pilot payment is actually higher than the conventional taxes would be. So this modification allows for them not to pay more than they would be under conventional taxes.
Ah. So that just refers to those buildings?
Yep, only those four.
Okay. And what else does that uh do? And what else do you? Okay, so they'll pay full taxes then, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the 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 amount that they're paying, so for example, if under the pilot agreement, their annual tax was ten thousand dollars, but under conventional taxes, it would only be assessed nine thousand dollars. They're they're only going to pay the nine thousand now and not the ten thousand.
How come?
Because they're the pilot payment was higher than they would be paying under conventional taxes. And that wasn't the 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 intent or the ordinances when they were done, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago.
Ah, okay. So they'll still be paying under the old pilot, right?
Yes, they're 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 still making their payments, they're just not paying more than would under conventional taxes.
Uh huh. And now, will I be subject to an increase like we will if we get reassessed?
Yeah, absolutely. So every year, there's an administrative charge and a um an annual service charge. And if these charges are higher than they would pay under conventional taxes, they they would not be paying. So if the assessment goes up, the property value goes up, the pilot increases as well as the assessment. So they would be paying not more than they would under the conventional taxes.
Okay, okay. I got you.
Okay.
Does that complete your comments?
Yes, thank you.
I am calling upon three-three-five-zero. Please state your name and address for the record. And your comments must be regarding the ordinance for public hearing.
Ernest McNolly, seven-ten Northeast Seventh Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. So the four buildings in North Beach, Wesley Grove, uh, city manager, what are the other two?
Um, Griffin and um the Paramount Property.
The Paramount Properties?
Yeah, I believe that is relating to um the uh Post Building. It's 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 a different name under which the uh, there's one or two properties in there.
So you so you can't tell me the exact wh- which developer owns the building?
Don't know that, Mr. McNolly. These are these are uh under having.
You're the you're the city manager. You're talking about tens of thousands of dollars.
No, no, we're not, Mr. McNolly. This this equates to about a hundred thousand dollars, if even. There's a couple of property, the majority of the properties are in North Beach. And that is, I'm sorry, that is the the Paramount Property is the North Beach Property on the ordinance.
And if I could just interject that there are no developers that own these properties. These are properties that are they're unit owners, individual unit owners are paying the taxes.
Correct. And what is happening is-
Wait a minute, wait, okay, okay. First of all, I'm trying to talk to the city manager. And and the city attorney, as usual, is going to jump in because everybody knows that when the two thousand two master development program happened, when you gave all these tax abatements-
This is unrelated.
Excuse me, well, it's it's related to what we're talking about.
Mute mute him, mute him, mute him. Mr. McNolly, you're strained. We said stick on the ordinance, you got the answers. Now you can ask more questions about the ordinance, but you're not going to go back to two thousand and two. It was explained what it's about, as far as like the taxes will be the same as conventional. So let Mr. McNolly go back in, but the next time he strays, he's gone.
Mr. McNolly, proceed.
So, so the uh, so the pilot program that they're on was was tax abatement and pilot means they don't pay school tax in Asbury. So now they're coming to the end of the, some of them are what, twenty and some are thirty year, or they're all twenty?
They're all thirty-year pilots.
They're all they're all thirty, North Beach was built thirty years ago.
I believe it's a thirty-year pilot.
I get it. So in other words, if it's built in two thousand seven, what 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 we're what's going on here is they probably says, listen, we got the pilot program when it was benefit to us not paying school tax. But now that the values went up on our properties, we we want to pay the lower of the two, whichever it is. I I I don't know if that's, I don't I don't want to use the word, I don't know what word I want to use. But you know what, you you're talking about mil- multimillionaires here. But you know what, you, you're talking about multi-millionaires here in those buildings. And what you're saying is you don't want them to pay a little bit more or a little bit less? How, how about the rest of the people? And they don't pay school tax. And North Beach, I know was built in 2007, I watched it being built, I think it was 2007. I watched it from my.
Yeah, and the pilot is 30 years, it's, it'll end in 30 years. It's not, but, but what, Mr. McNolly, what, what you don't, what I'm trying to explain is that we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. It, it comes out to about $200,000 total difference. And by law, we cannot charge them more. Our attorneys, we, this came to our attention from members of North Beach, our attorneys reviewed this and they said that we have to do this. This is, um, not the normal for a pilot to have you pay more than you would in conventional taxes. So they're not, um, paying less than the, the homeowner would and they are, and the school still gets their tax payment from us. When the city collects these pilot payments, the city still has to provide the school board with what we owe them each year. So although the way the pilot payment is structured, it's not structured like a regular tax payment, but the full amount does, does come to the city.
Does that complete your comments, Mr. McNolly?
I'm sorry, uh, just, uh, my final question. You, you said that your attorneys reviewed the pilot and the 30-year, uh, abatement and the somehow payment from, if it's regular tax, to the school tax, to the city. Okay, I understand a lot. But now my last question is which attorneys reviewed this?
Our, our, our waterfront redevelopment and our development attorney, um, Joseph Marzidi and David Weinstein.
Okay, but it, there was no input by, uh, the city law firm and Sogran Maron?
They, they do not deal with the pilot agreements in the redevelopment areas, no.
No, I didn't say that, but are they, did they have any comments or see what you're proposing tonight?
I cannot speak if they've seen anything, but they were not involved in the conference that I had.
Oh, oh, okay, thank you.
I was aware of this, but I have not been providing counsel to the city on this matter. As Donna indicated, the city has received invite from Waterfront Redevelopment Council and Redevelopment Council, not from my.
I just wanted to know if your law firm was aware, that's all. And you are.
You are aware.
And that's my last question, thank you.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the meet, meeting to the public on ordinance 2021-18.
Move to close, Quinn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now closed. A motion to adopt ordinance 2021-18.
Move to adopt. Second.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Our second ordinance up for public hearing is 2021-19, which is an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending traffic and parking regulations, chapter seven, designating waterfront parking for electric or plug-in hybrid vehicles. Mike, are you going to do the brief overview of this before we open to the public?
Uh, sure. So, uh, this ordinance is to amend the electric vehicle parking ordinance in the city. Um, as, as the council is aware and the public is aware, we have a, a series of electric vehicle charging stations that are being installed in the city as part of a, uh, concession contract with a company called Greenspot. Um, the initial locations, uh, one of the, for the initial phase, one of the locations was on Sunset Avenue. Um, that location upon further review by the engineering review by the company was determined not to be feasible in terms of electrical power source. Um, other locations were examined in the waterfront as to where there might be available power to install the charging stations. And, uh, the most feasible location was found to be this area on the 100 block of 7th Avenue. So that's what the ordinance is amending.
Thank you, Mike. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public for the public hearing on ordinance 2021-19?
Move to open, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is now open to the public for the public hearing on ordinance 21-19. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record and your comments can only be about the public hearing on ordinance 2021-19. I am calling upon 5124, 5124. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I don't know too much about this, but I'd like to know who pays for these things? Are we paying for them? I don't know how the electricity works with a car. How does that work? That's my question.
Mayor, I can answer that if you'd like.
Please.
Um, so Rita, the, the, the charging stations are paid for by the vendor, Greenspot, at their cost to install. Um, it's no cost to the city. The vendor pays for the electricity that's provided for the vehicles at no cost to the city. Vendor does charge users of the charging stations for.
You mean the person that has the car?
Correct.
Case? Oh, okay. I, I, I don't know how this works, that's why, yeah.
Problem, problem.
Okay. As long as it doesn't cost us anything.
Nothing.
Does that complete your comments?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm now calling upon 3350. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh yeah, Ernest McNolly, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. So, uh, there's, there's one on, uh, on, is it Madison or Bangs already?
There's cur, there's currently, uh, three charging stations located on Madison Avenue downtown, yes.
Three on Madison, okay.
Yeah.
And now you want to put one by North Beach, correct?
Uh, this is on the 100 block of 7th Avenue, that's correct.
Isn't, isn't that by North Beach?
That it, yes, it's just north of North Beach condo minimum, yeah.
So in other words, they're going to be right outside the North Beach building, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Wha, wha, what determined that that's the only area that's good? I mean, I know there's a lot of people in North Beach with electric cars. So is that why they're being put in there?
No, um.
I think, I think Mr. Manzella explained, and he can correct me when I'm done, they were originally scheduled for Sunset. They did a review of the area, they couldn't go there. We looked to put them on the 100 block of 6th Avenue again because of transformers and everything, they couldn't go there. So this is the only place feasible in the beachfront to put them. Mr. Manzella, correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct.
Am I still, uh, you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So then, are, are you saying that, how many places other than by North Beach on 7th, the 100 block, did you check to see if there was available electric? Because you said Sunset didn't work, 6th didn't work, did you check any other locations?
Yes, um, there were about six or seven locations throughout the waterfront that were reviewed, um, just with JC P and L's input to understand where, uh, you know, the, the available power would be avail, you know, available for the company to install these charging stations.
Okay.
And this is really the best, the really only feasible location.
Okay, so we're talking about on Ocean Avenue. In other words, you probably went from the Palace to North Beach, you checked to see where electric would be available and the power company told, told you on, on 7th, the 100 block, correct?
Uh, yes, they said that there was power there, that's correct.
Okay. Are, are you aware that there's tremendous high power all along Ocean Avenue? I mean tremendous, just tremendous.
So just to fully answer your question.
I mean, look what you're powering there.
Okay, just to fully answer your question, we did not scout any locations on Ocean Avenue. We looked at locations on the 100th and 200 blocks, um, just west of Ocean Avenue and.
On how many blocks? On how many, on how many streets? You did first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth? You did Asbury, you did, you did Bangs, you did, uh, you did Cookmeat, you did everything? And the only place that the power company told you was suitable electric for what, for these, how many spots are you putting in?
There's going to be four there.
Four next to North Beach, isn't that great? Okay. Okay, and, and they told you every other, every other spot, there wasn't enough electric? And you said you checked all along just, just west of Ocean Avenue, all along Ocean Avenue, and no place else had enough lec, electric except for four spots on the 100 block right next to the North Beach, correct?
Yes, there's, there's other.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I'm calling upon RR. Please state your name and address for the record.
Marina Revman, 3 Borough Square, Carlin, New Jersey. Um, how many handicapped spots are being taken away? I'm also, I'm also a Sativia Cross, we also advocate for disability, um, disability rights and marijuana rights, but I'm, how many, um, disability, how many handicap parking spots are being taken away?
Uh, there will be no handicap parking spots removed, uh, with the installation of these charging stations.
So nowhere in Asbury Park you're taking away handicap parking spots? Cause I hear that, um, with, was it Asbury Ave, you're doing something with parking and then another street?
Uh, I'm, I'm not familiar exactly with what you're talking about, but, um, we've actually, over the past few years, added a number of handicap spaces throughout the city.
How many?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but, um, for example, Main Street was just completed by NJ DOT and there were two handicap spaces per block installed on Main Street.
Okay, um, I would like to invite the town council just to spend eight hours in a wheelchair in Asbury Park, just so you guys can see how accessible it is. Would anybody be willing to do that?
And you know, I just want to point out that we work with the Christopher and Dana Reeve Foundation and have, um, done some of these, um, initiatives with them, you know, walk through businesses and boardwalks and, and other areas in town. Um, so, you know, it's something we've done, it's something that we'd be willing to do.
So you'd be willing.
And happy to have these conversations, but I'm not sure the second reading of an ordinance on electric cars is the time or place to be having these conversations.
Well, it does because.
So maybe you could give us your, you could give us your contact information, we'd be happy to reach out and meet with you.
No, because it does, because handicapped people do use those cars too. And, and also, we, we use also regular cars and a lot of times our parking spaces are, you know, magically disappear.
Okay, but, but our transportation plan are saying that no handicap parking spaces are being removed for the charging station.
And you're a hundred, okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance 21-19.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed on ordinance 21-19, a motion to adopt ordinance 2021-19.
Move to adopt. Second, Quinn.
Roll call, council member Chapman?
Yes.
Council member Clayton?
Yes.
Council member Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Our third and final public hearing for the night is on ordinance 2021-22, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-5 entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing a Rent Leveling Board as Well as Rules That Regulate the Price of Rent and the Rate of a Rent Increase for Certain Rental Housing Within the City of Asbury Park and Amending and Supplementing the Code of the City of Asbury Park to Establish a New Chapter 15 thereof which shall be entitled Rent Leveling Regulations." Before we open, uh, the public hearing on this ordinance, Fred, do you want to give a brief overview of ordinance 21-22?
Yes, sure. Um, this ordinance will amend the ordinance that the council adopted on March 10th, 2021, which established, uh, rent leveling board. The original ordinance created, um, the board to consist of seven members, but did not provide for the appointment of any alternates. The ordinance that council is considering this evening would create two alternate, uh, members to serve on the rent leveling board and it prescribes, uh, their terms and the appointment process. And that's essentially what this ordinance will accomplish.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 21-22?
Move to open. Second.
Did I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open on ordinance 21-22. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record and your comments must be only about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I am calling upon 3350. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Ernest McNolly, uh, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. So, uh, I would ask that you, um, oh well, I'm going to ask a question. Do you, do you have to have, um, alternatives, alternates? And the reason I'm going to ask that is because I've seen the list of who's on the board and, and, and they were all very against the referendum and somehow these developers got on this board. And now what I fear is if you add alternates, but don't have any requirement to say the two alternates must be residents or renters, you could probably get more developers on there and that's not good. So if you're going to vote for alternates, where do they come from? What, what, are they renters in Asbury? Are they developers? Are they investors? What, what, what do they have to be from?
It's, it's, it's more, let, let me correct you where you said like the board stacked as far as like landlords.
I didn't, I didn't say stacked, I, I didn't use.
Let me, let me correct you where you said everybody appointed was.
I didn't say everybody.
Okay. I, I don't know what you're saying, sir.
I, I said somebody like Peter Siegel, who was a big political against the referendum. It's an interesting.
And somebody like, and, 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 and we're, we're not going to go much further.
Okay, go ahead.
And somebody like, and somebody like Derek Bloom, who was the total opposite of Peter Siegel, was appointed. There was two landlords, two renters and three publics appointed so far. And tonight.
And all I'm asking, Mayor, all I'm asking is the question, on the alternatives, if you vote yes, can they be from any group or are you going to put in there where they have to come from?
I can, I can, I can answer, one is a homeowner and one is a renter and they both live in Asbury Park.
That's fantastic, thank you. So, so the two alternatives, it's, it's designated, if you vote yes, that they'll come from a renter in Asbury and a homeowner in Asbury?
No, that's not, that's not.
I, I just, I just.
Well, the fact that, the fact that the alternates happen to be a homeowner and a rent, renter doesn't mean that it always has to be that way. The way the ordinance is written and how it was originally written and adopted back in March is that the board shall consist of not less than two tenants nor less than two landlords. So there have to be at least two tenants and at least two landlords. Uh, and then it continues to say, "All members shall be either a resident of the city or an owner of property in the city." So the alternates have to be either a resident or, or a property owner in Asbury Park and they may be either a tenant or a landlord, but they don't have to be.
And, and if you vote, if you, if you vote yes tonight, if you vote yes tonight, if someone like a developer like, uh, I don't know, Sackman was on that mansion he's going to build on Main, if he wants to be on the board, if he owns that home, even though he's a developer, he could be one of the alternates. As long as you own a home, correct?
He could be, he could be, but he won't be.
Well, I'm not just talking about him. How about Fasano? How about, uh, uh, Chivino? How about all the other ones?
These are not, uh, these are not people that are on the ordinance, the alternates, we've already said who the alternates are. Every person who applies for the rent control board will be independently of. Every person who applies for the rent control board will be independently evaluated and chosen by the ca- a majority of the council, period. Whether it's Sakman, whether it's John Smith, who, whoever it is.
Time's up.
Next.
Calling upon five one two four, five one two four, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Rita Moreno. How long is the ultimate term for the alternates? Is there a term limit?
There isn't a term limit, Rita, but the, the terms of all members, whether they're regular members or alternates, are for three years. However, in order to start the staggering process, um, the, after, after we get through the, the initial period of, from appointment this evening through, uh, December thirty first of this year, then, um, the terms will be for either one, two, or three years to start the staggering, and then all appointments thereafter will be for a three-year period of time.
Mm-hmm. I looked at the list, and I think Peter Siegel's got the longest term, right?
As of right now, all of the appointees are only being appointed until December thirty first. So they're all equally appointed through December thirty first, at which point in time, at the reorg meeting, um, the council will be making appointments for the one, two, or three-year period of time to start the staggering.
Okay, okay. I guess it's a good idea to have alternates. That's it.
Thank you. I'm calling upon Felicia Simmons, Felicia Simmons, please state your name and address for the record.
Ten thirty four Soul Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey, Felicia Simmons. Um, my question is kind of close to earning, um, but with a suggestion. Um, because of, you know, fairness and the, the reason for the board, um, and they give empower the people of the city, um, the renters. Um, I think you should put in wording to say, since you kind of increased the numbers in having alters, alternates, you should have something in there saying, well, there has to be a designation of, um, one renter or one, um, property owner, um, something in that wording, or, you know, two renters or something like that, or a fairness of balance, where it has to be something to a equality in, inside the votes. Um, so it can't see that maybe the renter is out of town, or one of the renters are out of town. And it's not necessarily now on who's appointed until the thirty first, but this is, um, for future security. So it can't be, well, one renter and all property owners. Or in the future, if the board shifts and it's all renters and one property owner, it doesn't give, um, a, a presence of equality or, um, a conscious over the city, like a consensus over everyone in the city. So I think some wording that shows some kind of balance in a voting order, or the power of the voting order, um, would be, um, needed, and that's it.
Thank you, Felicia. Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance twenty one dash five, uh, twenty one dash twenty two.
Move to close.
Second, Kendall.
Public hearing is now closed on ordinance twenty one dash twenty two, a motion to adopt ordinance twenty one dash twenty two.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, council member Chapman.
Yes.
Council member Clayton.
Yes.
Council member Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to individual resolution twenty twenty one dash two seventy three, a resolution referring the proposed cannabis opt-out ordinance to the planning board pursuant to the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Moore.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call, council member Chapman.
Yes.
Council member Clayton.
Yes.
Council member Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're on to resolution twenty twenty one dash two seventy four, a resolution confirming the terms of the regular members of the rent leveling board and appointing alter- alternate members to the board, and the alternate, alternate members are Jama Shelton and Nadia Fontaine. The terms of the members of the rent leveling board are expiring, are all going to expire on twelve thirty one, twenty twenty one, to be consistent with all other boards and commissions within the city. The staggering terms of the members will commence at the reorg meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, Kendall.
Second.
Roll call, council member Chapman.
Yes.
Council member Clayton.
Yes.
Council member Kendall.
Yes.
Deputy mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Move it to adjourn, Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now adjourned.
Yay, see you guys in person next time.
Hmm.
Stay safe.